We will begin the public speak-out version of our meeting. I will allow 30 minutes for a public speak-out. There are 22 people signed up to speak tonight, and so I'm going to give everyone one minute to address the council. Please do not go over your time. If you do go over your time and this process takes more than half an hour, we're going to have to cut people off, and so those at the end of the list will not have an opportunity to speak. So please keep your comments to 60 seconds. The first person signed up for public speak-out is Jesse Letterman.
Good evening. For the councilors that are here, my name is Jesse Letterman. I reside at 147 Westminster Street, and I'm here to speak this evening in support of Councilor Gomez's May Day Resolution. But before I begin, I just have to express some disappointment at the amount of empty chairs that exist in your chamber this evening. What's behind me is truly what democracy looks like, but what in front of me unfortunately for the empty chairs is not what democracy should look like in the city of Springfield when you have this amount of public engagement at your meeting. Put simply, as we stand here today in the midst of a truly disturbing national political atmosphere, the city of Springfield has an opportunity to be a beacon and to join what cities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States of America have done already. We are a community that shares the history of our nation. We are a community that was built on the backs of and by the hands of immigrants and workers, and we need to stand up today and support those immigrants and workers. Indeed, everybody in this room, unless you are of indigenous descent, comes from immigrants who came for a better life for their children and their families. That's the same reason people come to this country today, and we should support them. So I encourage you to vote yes on Councilor Gomez's resolution. Thank you.
The next person is Ryan Brian? Brian? Prior?
Thank you so much. My name is Ryan Prior. I'm a family nurse practitioner in a community health center in Springfield and a proud resident of Forest Park. I'm speaking in support of the May Day Resolution. Many of the clients I'm proud to give care for are immigrants to the United States, many recent immigrants, including refugees. It enrages me to witness every day the negative impact of anti-immigrant legislation and rhetoric on the lives of my clients. Although this is not a new problem since the 2016 election, things have gotten worse. I've noticed an increase in insomnia, depression, anxiety, and post-traumatic stress symptoms. My clients tell me they're afraid to apply for SNAP benefits. A recent report by Health Impact Partners shows that about 30% of U.S. children of undocumented parents are afraid most or all of the time. We know that transgender, gay, lesbian, bisexual immigrants, Black and Latino members of our communities, regardless of immigration status, immigrants with disabilities, and people experiencing intimate partner violence have been and will be the most violently impacted by law enforcement involvement and immigration enforcement. May every single one of us be free of the completely unnecessary and preventable effects of toxic stress and fear in our world. I ask that you pass the May Day Resolution today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yvette Hernandez. Yvette Hernandez, is she here?
She's here.
All right. All right, we'll move on.
She's down here.
Our next speaker is Ernesto Cruz.
All right, good evening. So my name is Ernesto Cruz. I reside at 251 St. James Boulevard, and what I'm asking the council to do is to do what's right. Everyone standing here knew that the threat of taking away funding for a city that was a sanctuary city would not hold up in court. We were right then, we're right now. It's been proven by the courts. Number one. Number two, morally, this is the right thing to do. Under no circumstances should any human being be subjected to the embarrassment, to the fear, and to the experience of being detained and taken away when they've done nothing wrong. This is the right thing to do. Everyone here knew it before. We know it now, and I ask everyone to do the right thing and vote yes for this resolution. Thank you.
Barbara Johnson. Sarah Barbara Johnson. Barbara Johnson.
Someone at the door, please.
Is she here?
What organization are they in?
All right, we'll move on. Jafet Robles. Is Jafet here?
Jafet?
All right, next person on the list is Amy Bookbinder.
Mayor Sarno was talking about what a caring city this is, and he was talking about, in response to questions about what he's going to do or what he has done for the people of Springfield, and he was not pleased being asked about that, and he said enough is enough. So I'm here to ask you to please vote for this resolution for all of the people and to please call on the mayor to do the right thing as well, because he's, we're his bosses, and we're here to say that that's what we want him to do. So enough is enough, Sarno.
Elliot Stratton.
Hi, I'm Elliot Stratton. I live at 174 Buckingham Street here in Springfield. A member of a lot of the different organizations here, but also of South Congregational Church, Interfaith Council of Western Mass, and previously with the Council of Churches. Many are speaking about immigrants' rights and workers' rights. I would like to speak to the issue of being a sanctuary city. And I would like to quote the greatest moral leader that we have in the world, and that's Pope Francis, who had a TED Talk a week or so ago, and he spoke about what it means to be a revolutionary. He was saying, a revolutionary, we need each other. When there is an us, there begins a resolution. And so we've got to remember the us. We are us and all together. That independence, in independence, no one is an island. We can't be separated from one another. We can only build the future by standing together, including everyone. That he quoted from the Good Samaritan, saying the story of today's humanity is based on the Good Samaritan. Let us help each other, all together, and for hope through the darkness of today's conflicts, and each and every one of us can become a bright candle, light that overcomes darkness. And so we can be a light that overcomes darkness in this city, that with the city council becoming a leader in solving the plights of our brothers and sisters by stepping forward with this resolution, to be a leader of the Pioneer Valley for our brothers and sisters. Too often, there is a rhetoric, rhetoric that we cannot be welcoming because it drains our resources, that we cannot, you know, accept others that are different than us, but let us be progressive, because in the progressive cities, the immigrants and people working together create a better tax base. They improve our cities. They make a difference. And so we ask you leaders, who do so many things in so many ways, but we need you to stand up against the White House and the Attorney General. We cannot be afraid to do what is right.
Just a reminder, please keep your comments to 60 seconds. We have another 16 speakers to get to, so please keep your comments to one minute. Next person is Odaliz Borrajes.
Odaliz Borrajes, with a B?
Is that you?
That is. Well, we're coming up.
Mi nombre es Odaliz Borrajes. Vivo en Webster Street, Springfield. Soy ciudadana de los Estados Unidos, pero soy hija de padres y documentados.
My name is Odaliz Borrajes. I live on Webster Street in Springfield. I'm a U.S. citizen, but my parents are undocumented.
Nuestra comunidad inmigrante vive con miedo de ser deportados, y en el trabajo muchos de nosotros somos amenazados y tratados mal por los patrones.
The immigrant community lives with the fear of being deported, and we suffer many abuses at work. We are often treated badly by our employers.
Por ejemplo, mi mamá estuvo trabajando buscando tomates en Florida. Es un trabajo muy duro, donde hay que correr todo el día. Un día, al tratar de subir al troque porque se iban a trabajar a otro lado, se cayó. Ella tan solo tenía seis meses de embarazo. Se cayó del troque, y el patrón le gritó que tenía que levantarse, o iba a pasarle el troque encima.
For example, my mother was working picking tomatoes in Florida. This is a very hard job. You have to run all day long. One day, she had to get on a truck that was taking the workers somewhere else, and she fell. She was six months pregnant. She fell on the ground, and her boss yelled at her and told her to get up, or he would run her over.
Ella empezó a sentir dolor, pero siguió trabajando. El jefe se dio cuenta de que ella estaba mal y le amenazó. Si decía algo, llamaría a inmigración, y él le dijo lo mismo a todas las personas que fueron testigos. Esa misma noche, ella tuvo al bebé prematuramente.
She was in pain, and her boss noticed, and he threatened her and told her that if she said anything, he would call immigration. He said the same thing to other people who had seen her fall. That night, she had her baby prematurely.
Esto es muy común para todos nosotros. Todos sufrimos con este tipo de abuso y más.
This is very common experience for us. We all suffer with this kind of abuse and more.
No somos criminales. Muchas veces somos víctimas del crimen. Necesitamos poder acudir a la policía y no poder, por tener miedo, porque la policía está trabajando con la inmigración.
This kind of abuse is common. We are not criminals. Instead, we are often the victims of crimes. We should not be afraid to go to the police out of fear that they are working with immigration.
Pedimos su apoyo, y muchas gracias por escucharme.
We ask for your support, and thank you for listening.
Mi nombre es Luis Perez. Vivo en La Briago, aquí en Springfield. He vivido aquí por 12 años.
My name is Luis Perez. I live on Brightwood Avenue in Springfield. I've lived here for about 12 years.
Soy mexicano. Crecí dentro de una familia muy pobre. Tuve que dejar la escuela a la edad de 12 años.
I am Mexican, and I, because I grew up in a poor family, I had to leave school when I was 12 years old.
Porque a partir de esa edad, yo tenía que trabajar con mis padres en el campo.
Because, beginning at that age, I had to work with my parents in the fields.
La mayoría de los inmigrantes que venimos a este país cruzamos el desierto caminando.
Most, if not all, of the immigrants who come to the U.S. cross the border walking, just like I did.
Pasamos en los trabajos más duros con muy poquito dinero de pago.
We work in the hardest jobs that exist and we're paid the least.
Porque los patrones saben que no tenemos papeles, por esa razón nos pagan lo que quieren.
Because the bosses know that we don't have papers, they pay us whatever they want to pay us.
En Massachusetts, he trabajado en nurseryas, en finca de tabaco, en finca de verduras, y aquí en este valle, los inmigrantes trabajan todas las horas que les den, siete días a la semana si es posible. Trabajamos en el campo, en los restaurantes, limpiando cuartos, en los hoteles, cortamos las gramas, en las casas, trabajamos también en las fábricas.
In Massachusetts, I've worked at nurseries and at tobacco and vegetable farms. Immigrants here in the valley work as many hours as we can, seven days a week. We work in the fields, we work in restaurants, we clean rooms in hotels, and we mow your lawns, and we work in factories.
Al contrario de lo que dicen las personas mal informadas de los inmigrantes indocumentados, no son elegibles para ayudar al estado. No somos criminales, somos trabajadores.
Contrary to what uninformed people say, undocumented immigrants are not eligible for help from the state. We are not criminals, we are workers.
Les pido a ustedes, como padres, que está detenido y que tiene que escuchar a uno de sus hijos, por favor, no lleven a mis papás. Un hijo destrozado porque no va a ver a su papá o a su mamá por años. Pedimos que piensen cómo sería estar separado de sus hijos por un año o más.
I ask to put yourself in the place of a father who's detained and who has to hear his children say, please don't take my father. A child destroyed, thinking he won't see his mother or father for years. We ask you to think what that would be like and what it would be like to be separated from your own children.
Pedimos su apoyo. Pedimos que la ciudad de Springfield no deje a sus policías colaborar con los de inmigración, porque los inmigrantes son víctimas de crímenes igual que los demás, y necesitamos pedir a la policía para ayudarnos.
We ask for your support, and we ask the city of Springfield to not allow the police to collaborate with immigration, because immigrants are victims of crime, just like everybody else, and we need to be able to go to the police for help.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
We have about 10 minutes left for public speak-out. We still have another 12 people to speak, left to speak, and so it doesn't look like we're going to have enough time to get to everyone. The next person in line is Nisreen Akwal. One minute, please.
Nisreen was unable to make it today. My name is Mary Johnson with the Islamic Society of Western Massachusetts. Thank you very much for bringing forward this pro-immigrant resolution, and we wanted, this means so much to newcomers in our city. I'm myself a Springfield resident. We urge you to show refugees and immigrants that we do not persecute them, but that we need their help to find and prosecute those who exploit them and abuse them, because if they're afraid, then the laws that protect them and the special immigrant visas that protect them will not be able to be used. We need, if we can remove instead their fear, then we are taking a big and important step towards safety and compassion in our city, and that, after all, is the kind of Springfield we all would like to live in. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Sierra. I'm an organizer at the Pioneer Valley Worker Center. I grew up undocumented in the States, and I know what it feels like firsthand to be afraid, to be too afraid to call the police because you're afraid that they'll take your family away when you're trying to denounce your abusive father who's beating up on your mom. This is a very black and white issue. You have a choice. You can either act to make this city a sanctuary city, act to stop state violence being inflicted against families, or you don't. It's black and white, and the choice is in your hands. And if you fail to act, there's a name for that. It's called cowardice and hypocrisy. And you are here. I'm very happy to see such a diverse board. That's not the case in Northampton, but you are here because of social movements that have preceded you, radical social movements who had a vision of democracy. And diverse faces in government is not enough for us anymore. If you are representing diverse communities, but you are enacting policies that inflict state violence, that is no longer acceptable. Actual change. Michael Fenton, I sat with you on a panel where we talked about immigration policy. You are very proud that the city is diverse and that even puts up flags in honor of the different immigrant communities. Now you have a chance to put that rhetoric into practice. Are you going to stand with immigrants, or are you not? And we need sanctuary legislation now, or you can expect us to come back and to hit harder, and we will hit the economic interests of those who run this city, because we know that those are the people who have sway. So we will be back, and I expect you to actually make history, because history will be judging you. Thank you.
Eric Bauer. One more time, is there an Eric Bauer? All right, moving on. Juana Girona? Juana Girona? Is she here? Rose Bookbinder? Is there a Rose Bookbinder? Last time, Rose Bookbinder? Is she here? Is she in the room?
Yes, she's coming.
All right, we're moving on. Karen Ford.
Rose asked me to take her place. I'm on the list. My name's Harris Freeman. I'm a member of the faculty at Western New England University Law School and a cooperating attorney for the HCLU, and I'd like to speak as a citizen of a sanctuary city to the city where I work that should become a sanctuary city. I'd like to address something very specific, which is the fears that the Trump administration is placing on elected officials to urge them to avoid enacting sanctuary city policies. And I'd like to say that it's my view that there's no basis for the Trump administration to require municipalities to enforce federal immigration law. There is no constitutional provision that can now be used to require local governments participate in federal immigration, because Congress has passed no law that compels local governments to enact or administer federal immigration law. In fact, the, that's not on my time, I hope, right?
You have 15 seconds.
The Supreme Court has made it clear that local law enforcement agents do not have the legal authority to stop or detain people for suspected violations of civil immigration law. More specifically, both the federal immigration law nor Trump's executive order are grounds to take federal money away from local governments that choose not to participate in the federal government's enforcement of immigration law. In fact, to not pass an ordinance is going to be the most costly thing that a city can do now, because the city is going to have to start diverting important public safety resources to immigration enforcement instead of in keeping our communities safe, keeping our communities united, and keeping the solidarity between immigrants and non-immigrants together in our communities. So I would urge the city to carefully look at the fact that a federal court in California has struck down the Trump administration's efforts to command cities to enforce federal immigration law. You are taking the side of municipalities, large and small, in the Commonwealth and across the United States, if you take the important and urgent step of enacting a sanctuary city ordinance here in Springfield so that resources of public safety can be used for that and not to harass and intimidate and strike fear into the hearts of your citizens. Thank you.
Karen Ford. Rhonda Latney. Is there Rhonda Latney in the room? All right, next person on the list, Darlene Elias.
Hello, I'm here today representing two different organizations. First, the Green Party, and my colleague Joyce Palmer-Fortun is here, and Richard Purcell. I am the Massachusetts co-chair of the Green Party. In addition to that, my colleagues from Nota Promesa are in the back. I want to emphasize, when the city of Springfield was founded by the French, by the Irish, by the English, by the Italians, they were not considered illegal, right? Now that you have a new influx of individuals and immigrants that no longer serve the purpose of the 1%, right? They are now considered illegal. But we're here to tell you that no human being is illegal. Why is it that back then, when this country was founded, it was okay? And now that their resources and their money is at stake, it's no longer okay? Please think outside the box. Deportation is a manifestation of racism, and let's not be, and let's not be hypocritical. Let's call it what it is. And so what we urge you to do, the Green Party urges you to do, and we stand in solidarity with everyone in this room, we will continue to fight this fight, and we're going to ask you to please support Adam Goldsmith's resolution to make this a sanctuary city.
And on behalf of the Green Rainbow Party of Massachusetts, I just ask every one of you to look in your hearts and to do the right thing. People voted for you, they put you here, and that's one of the things that you need to do. Look in your heart and do what's right.
Jeff Napolatino, is he in the room? Moving on, Holly Richardson. Is there Holly Richardson? Russ Seelig.
I'm Russell Seelig. I live on, in the Forest Park area in Springfield. I'm here to, I'm going to change the subject, and the subject is the Board of Assessors. And in my opinion, the Board of Assessors is an embarrassment to the city when it comes to the valuation of investment properties costing the city millions of dollars in potential tax revenue left in the pockets of the parcel owners or their representatives. The most recent case in point is that which came about as a result of a motion hearing in Springfield Superior Court, which appears to have cost the city almost $5 million, almost $5 million over the last four years in tax, potential tax revenue left in the pockets of parcel owners who should have been paying those taxes. The court decision in this case was that a reasonable fact-finder could determine that the city has undervalued intentionally or otherwise parcels that host billboard cell towers and cell antenna, and a reasonable fact-finder could conclude that the city's failure to properly assess parcels that contain billboard cell towers and cell antenna is costing the city taxpayers approximately $1.2 million a year in lost revenue. And documentation from the assessors shows that this errant practice has been going on for at least four years. The total for those four years is how we get to $5 million. Shame on the Board of Assessors. Further, the motion hearing covered only about 100 of the 2,300 investment properties in the city, leaving open the question of the valuation of the other 2,200 investment parcels hosting office buildings, retail establishments, car dealers, and the like. And I'm wondering if anybody is looking at them. In 2013, the DOR's local advisor provided the Board of Assessors the correct format In 2013, the DOR's local advisor provided the Board of Assessors the correct format for valuing billboards and cell towers and other investment properties as well, both in prose and in number format. The Board of Assessors, for some strange reason, decided to ignore the DOR's approved methods and went off on their own using a valuation approach which the Superior Court Judge nicely called an amalgam. Shame on the Board of Assessors. Now the Board of Assessors is also leaving another estimated $225,000 in the pockets of investment parcel owners when it fails to enact penalties against those parcel owners who do not return information requests, penalties routinely enacted by the better-performing Board of Assessors of the City of Springfield. Shame again on the Board of Assessors. And so I wonder how seriously the Board of Assessors takes its oath of office.
Seelig has the microphone. Go ahead, Mr. Seelig.
Is it time for an independent audit of the Board of Assessors? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, the time -- we're a little bit past 7:00. We'll take a brief recess and we'll begin our regular meeting as soon as the clerk comes back into the room. All right, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook. Absent. Counselor Gomez.
Absent.
Counselor Walsh.
Absent. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash.
Here.
Counselor Ash, I mean Counselor Twigs. Absent. Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bud Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos.
Present. Would the clerk please recognize the counselor in seat number four?
Counselor Gomez.
Here.
Here.
The clerk please recognize the counselor in seat number five.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
All right. Would the counsel and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now! What do we want? Sanctuary! What do we want? Now!
We're going to take a brief recess to allow the police to take orders. Brief recess.
Several disobedience.
They did that for the Aigwol Counselors that were here with him talking.
Several disobedience.
That was for the Aigwol Counselors. Get Jennifer Natale. You got her, Jennifer Natale?
All right, I'm calling the meeting back to order. Would the clerk please recognize the counselor in seat number three?
Counselor Rook. Here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take item number 24 out of order.
There's an objection on the floor. We will go back to our regular agenda. Item number one.
Item number one is the March Revenue and Expenditure Report.
Good evening, councilors. Tonight you have the March Revenue and Expenditure Report, represents 75% of the fiscal year, and you'll see that our revenue is right on track and our expenditures are slightly under.
Questions from the council? Seeing none? Are those in favor of accepting the report say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it?
Thank you.
Are there any reports of committee? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight at 5:30. There were approximately, I think, 11 items that we discussed. Counselor Fenton was there the whole time. I was there. Counselor Twigs was not able to attend. Counselor Fenton and I went through items, along with many members of the financial team, et cetera. It was great attendance from City Hall. And starting with the grant number 11 through number 20, budget transfer, we discussed all of those. And we approved, Counselor Fenton and I approved, all of them except for 13. Collective bargaining agreement ratification, we did not approve that. And that we'll get a chance to discuss that when it comes up. But the other nine items were approved by us at the committee level, as well as Mr. Burns' report. I should have said something on it, but we're at 75% of revenue and 73% of expenses at the three-quarter mark. So we're in good shape budget-wise, but there's always a chance of that going awry. But at this point, it looks good. Thank you.
Are those in favor of accepting the report say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Maintenance and Development Committee has two reports to give. One is on an item that was referred to committee. It is the ordinance for the mobile food trucks that the issue brought forward by my colleague, Counselor Marcus Williams. We met last week on the items that were referred to committee, the mobile food trucks and the occupancy manual. In attendance were Counselor Gomez, myself, Counselor Williams, the Maintenance and Development Committee, Chris Signoli was there, Chris Russell from the bid. We had a very good meeting because a lot of the issues that had been sent to committee had been worked out. You may recall, there was quite a discussion on how a lottery system for the trucks and where they would be placed and how they would be chosen. And in our discussion, that issue was resolved, and the occupancy issue was also resolved. And those two items are coming up, our items 22 and 23. And Chris Signoli from DPW is here if we have any questions, and Counselor Marcus Williams is here because he did a lot of work on this issue. And hopefully, we can bring up orders 22 and 23 on this issue so they can get going forward. And I also want to make a report that the Maintenance and Development Committee last week had a tour of Union Station. The entire council was invited. We had a wonderful turnout of councilors, and we were able to see firsthand the improvements to Union Station. And I myself, and I'm sure many of the other councilors were very impressed with how it looks. It's such an improvement to what is there now. And over the weekend, we saw that the PVTA actually is going to be going there, and we were shown all those births. And I want to thank Chris Moskell for working with us to set up that tour, and to thank my colleagues for going to that because I think it was important. We saw that, we voted on many issues, and we've supported that for a long time. So I'm happy that the city council had an opportunity to see it before it opened officially. So thank you for joining me.
It was a great tour, Counselor, and I thank you for setting that up. That building is very, very impressive.
Thanks for setting it up.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports? Counselor Ash.
The Safety Committee met last week regarding two items. Counselors Hurst and yourself and Counselor Allen were present. We met with Commissioner Barberi and also Bill Mahoney. And the two items were the repair of the cells in the lockup at Pearl Street, and the second item was status of body cameras. The first item, relative to the repair, the cost that's been presented to the city council is $150,000 to repair the cells in lockup. Obviously, we're looking at the totality of the building, what our aim is going forward, but there is that option to the city to put that money towards repair, then make that more habitable for, as they are. They're in terrible shape right now, and so that's an option that the police department is currently looking at. As it relates to the body cameras, that item, as we all are well aware, is currently being negotiated between the two parties. I can say to say that all of the councilors present at the meeting were in favor of adopting a body camera program, as is the commissioner. There are costs associated with it, which are pretty significant, but I think we all agree that it's well worth the effort and also the cost. And again, it's being negotiated right now, and as that progresses, I'll keep the full committee up to date.
Are those in favor of accepting the report say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Are there any other reports of committee? Say again, are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, I see that under petitions, the first item is also listed as item number We had the expenditure report.
Yeah, that's correct. That's an issue within the numbers.
Okay.
I can either go by that number eight, or I can just add one to each number.
So we'll go with petitions, items number one through six, because those are similar. So we'll take one through six?
Okay. Petitions, items one through six. Items one and two are petitions from Columbia Gas for the installation of underground gas mains throughout the city of Springfield. Items three through six are petitions from Eversource for the installation of electric conduits and the relocation of a utility pool, again, in various locations throughout the city. The reports from the BPW were to approve.
Good evening, councilors. Just to follow up with, excuse me, Clerk Wilson was mentioning, the two projects by CMA are two underground extension projects that they're doing in the Hungry Hill section of the city. Eversource has work associated ahead of road projects that are going to be happening in certain areas, as well as extension of electric service to the new energy plant at Bay State Medical Center.
Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Ash.
Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Signoli a question? Not directly related to this, but it's sort of. Chris, just a quick question. How do we decide, and last week was on the agenda, about gas hookups in various parts of the city? How does that get decided? Somebody asked me after the last meeting.
As far as what goes on the agenda?
No, 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 just in general. How do some streets have gas and others don't?
If you're talking for an individual home, that goes through the gas company, it ends up not being an issue with regard to the Board of Public Works or the city council. Both to the Board of Public Works when they are either installing or replacing a new line in an existing street, not in an existing location. So if they're putting a new line in a street, that means it's required to go to the Board of Public Works and the city council. If it's a replacement in the exact same place, it does not require it. But if it's in a new location on an existing street, it requires the approval.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing?
What items are these, again?
This is, under petitions, items one through six. Any other questions from the council?
Any.
Seeing none? Are those in favor of accepting items one through six? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it?
Should we take these together? Six through 10.
Who do items seven through 10?
Item seven through 10. Item seven is a petition from the PVTA to pour concrete landing pads at various locations throughout the city. Items eight through 10 are petitions from Light Tower for the installation of fiber-optic conduit at various locations throughout the city. The recommendation from the Board of Public Works is to approve.
Good evening, Counselor. The petition number seven from the PVTA at 159 locations throughout the city, they're installing concrete pads that connect sidewalks to locations where they have bus stops that currently there is no way to get from a sidewalk to the bus stop without going over grass, et cetera. So those are being located throughout the city. In your packet, it talks about the individual locations. Light Tower has had a number of petitions in front of us. They're doing backbone work for a lot of the schools in the city, so they're putting in fiber-optic network systems throughout the city to be able to connect various city schools and city buildings in the city.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern or point is with respect to agenda item number seven. The PVTA is launching a program to consolidate a variety of bus stops across the city, and I've been getting calls from a lot of constituents who are concerned about some of that proposed consolidation, which I understand will eventually come before us. It seems to me that this investment that they're making in landing pads to the tune of 159 different locations is relevant to that. And Mr. Signoli's right that we've been provided with an itemized list of all of the locations, but I think it would be helpful to hold a committee meeting to talk about the consolidation of these routes, as well as to discuss the locations on that interactive map that they prepared of these ADA-compliant ramps. This is a substantial investment, and certainly we want to encourage it, but I can already just spot-check some of these sites where I know that there's already ADA-compliant ramps in existence in or around that area. So I'd make a motion that we refer this matter to committee.
A second.
Just item number seven.
So a motion made by Counselor Fenton, seconded by Counselor Ash. Counselor Walsh on the motion.
Yes, I was going to stand to second this and to say that the Maintenance and Development Committee will hold a meeting in the next couple of weeks on this because I also have been receiving phone calls and emails and letters about this. So I think it's a very good thing to have a meeting with the public and come forward.
Counselor Williams on the motion.
Mr. President, and I too rise to support this. And in terms of making the adjustments on the routes, the certificate routes, it's my understanding bus routes will be eliminated. Some of the smaller vans that transport elderly folks to hospital doctor appointments are going to be eliminated. This is a serious, serious situation. And I think we need to look at it and come together with PVTA. I'm going to tell you, this will be devastating to the senior and elderly community. And folks really rely on public transportation. It seems to me that the Commonwealth is trying to make a broader plan to incorporate more of public transportation because it deals with emissions and less vehicles on the roads and all that good stuff. We are eliminating potential sites in this city, and I will absolutely not vote for that and do everything in my power to stop this consolidation. And I will absolutely not vote for that and do everything in my power to stop this consolidation because typically, when this happens, people in the urban centers are directly affected by it because they really rely on public transportation. So Councilor Fenton and Walsh will be part of that meeting. I think we should do it sooner than later because they're on a very fast track to get this done. Thank you.
We'll have to have it in a public place.
Council Marcus Williams?
And we will. And Mr. President, we will have that in a public place so more, as many people as possible can attend.
Okay. Council Marcus Williams?
Just piggybacking what my colleagues stated, I also plan to call a committee on Elder Affairs Subcommittee meeting to discuss that specific issue. I've also received calls in the neighborhood, and I know actually, some representatives from PVTA came to the 16 Acres Civic Association meeting and were not well received with the information that they relayed. So in tandem with the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee, I would also, just for the record, state that I'll be calling Elder Affairs Subcommittee right after as well.
Or we could combine the two if you want to do that.
Right. Motion made by Council Fenton, seconded by Council Ash to send item number seven to the Maintenance and Development Committee Chair by Council Walsh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Are there any other questions on items eight through 10? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the petition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you, Councilor.
Item number 11, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 11 is a One Care Grant Award, no match in the amount of $19,329 sponsored by the mayor.
We'll take item number 12 as well, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 12 is a donation to the fire department in the amount of $100.
All those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 13 is an order for ratification of a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees sponsored by the mayor.
Councilor Allen?
Item 13, Mr. President. Oh, he is here. Okay, sorry. I didn't know he was here. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilor. How are you? Bill Mahoney, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations. I was just racing down here from another bargaining session.
Bill, could you fix the mic so you're speaking right into it, please?
Yep, how's that? Better?
That's way better, yeah.
So tonight, you have the Ask Me Local 3065 collective bargaining agreements in front of you. There are about 34 members in this bargaining unit. We began negotiations on December 20, 2016. We had six bargaining sessions. You have two contracts in front of you. The first contract is for the year 2016 to 2017. That's at 2%. The second contract is a three-year contract from 2017 to 2020, began at 2, 2, and 2, which follows the pattern that we've established with our other bargaining units. We have two upgrades that were proposed by the union in this contract, which we have agreed to. Well, we've agreed partially to. They were up here, we were down here, we met in the middle on those two upgrades. This has some great language for us. We've added direct deposit to this contract. We've added electronic payroll advices. We have uniform and dress code language. We've added GPS language to this contract. We've added some disciplinary policy language to the contract. We've increased the shift differential and the weekend shift differential to the same as the UFCW contract, which the employees in this group, they supervise the employees in the UFCW group. We also increased the meal allowance a little bit so that it also mirrors the UFCW contract.
Council Williams?
My usual question, though. Can you speak to residency?
It's already in there, Councilor. Yes.
So all those categories, residency is covered?
Anyone hired after July 1, 2014 is covered, is subject to the city ordinances on residency.
Bill, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. I talked to Bill today because I had some questions on this contract, and they're different than the normal questions that we normally have. So I've got a few questions that came up in the Finance Committee meeting. So I've talked to Bill today over the phone in the Finance Committee meeting. Bill was not able to attend because he was in another bargaining session. So I will ask my questions here. I've talked to a couple of councilors today when I discovered this. There is something different in this contract than what we normally have. And that is, there's a Section 12, you'll find the contract in your packet, and there's six attachments. Section 12, I wish I could tell you, packet page 83 has different language than we normally face. And you can call it what you want to call it, but there's two individuals who have been specified in the contract to receive certain things, et cetera. So I talked to Bill about this for about 20 minutes today, or 15 minutes. And then in the committee meeting tonight, we talked about it with Council Fenton and about six or eight other people. Oh, we went probably 20 minutes or 30 minutes on it before we finally said we need Bill. So what I'd like to point out to you is it says tentative agreement. And in this case, tentative, as I was told in the committee meeting, maybe, Bill, you could just confirm this. The reason it says tentative is because it's just not approved by the council yet.
Right. Whatever we reach at the table as a tentative agreement, it's subject to ratification by the union and then subject to ratification by the city council. So this agreement that you have in front of you was reached at the table, was signed by the parties, was brought back to the bargaining unit. They ratified and approved it, which then sends the ball back into our court, and I bring it to you.
Okay, thanks. One thing I want to point out to all the members of the council is that a grievance was filed on April 3 about this agreement. And the grievance was filed on April 3, and the vote of the union was on April 5. So that was Tuesday, April 3. Is that right? Tuesday? Well, whatever, April. I think it was a Monday, April 3. And then the vote was taken a couple of days later. The union did agree with this contract, but in the committee meeting, as we asked more questions, there were more things that came up that were different. TJ Plant, our chief financial officer, was there, as well as Pat Sullivan, and they both agreed that there were things unusual about this and that they couldn't necessarily answer without Bill. So I'm going to ask some tough questions. And, you know, everybody form your own judgment as to how you like this. The union president, who was at the table negotiating the contract, is a beneficiary of item 12. So the first question is, in my view, a fair question to Bill, hopefully, why was the union president at the table? It's normal for him to be at the table, but not normal to be worked to have a special part of, you look at item 12 and page 83. So I asked at the committee meeting if that was a conflict of interest, and I wonder if you could just give us an opinion on that.
Sure. And I don't know that, there was a bargaining unit member on the negotiating team at the table with us who is referenced in that article of the tentative agreement. I don't know that he's the union president. I just don't know. But, you know, it's a mandatory subject of bargaining. When the union puts an upgrade on the table, we have to negotiate over it. I mean, we can't just say, you know, no, we're not going to talk to you about that. You know, there are certain things that we are by law required to negotiate over. We don't have to agree to them, but we're obligated to bargain over it. So in totality, when we looked at this contract, and I listed a number of things which were fantastic for the city to get in this contract, which we got, and the wage increases of 2, 2, 2, and 2 fit the pattern that we established with our other units, you know, we're fine with this. And before we agreed to that, we went back and we talked with the department head, and we said, you know, how's the work of this employee? You know, how does this person stand out? What additional duties, if any, is he performing? We'll add that. We'll change the job description, which is what we did. We rewrote the job description, gave them a new job description with the additional duties in it. And then what we did is we reserved those duties to the city so that if that employee retires or separates service, those are not necessarily bargaining unit duties, those new ones. They can stay in the non-bargaining realm if that's what we decide to do. Or if not, we'll just go and we can post the position as is. I think we'd want an MOA with the union on that. And we did that with both of those positions. And I would note that the other person was not part of the bargaining committee, and they also proposed an increase for her, and we agreed to, again, we reached an agreement with them on that position.
So I just want to clear the air that none of this is personal with me. I just believe that this contract has characteristics which we, as a council, need to seriously consider before we approve it, if we approve it. And one of them is, I will read to you the grievance here that I received from someone who filed a grievance. Statement of grievance, not posting job for senior park foreman and handing it to, I won't use the person's name, to a certain person with no job description or compensation listed. Not only is he not a senior foreman, he never took the foreman exam, and he had the opportunity to take it twice. Also, job is only for as long as he stays employed, either posted job or eliminated. So we have a situation where it looks like, I could be wrong, and I'm happy to have Pat Sullivan or TJ talk about it, but they agreed in the committee meeting that this was a different process, that there was an opening on the city side. The union heard about the opening and decided to say, this is a position that we would like to propose this thing for. And apparently, that's how it normally works. As a result, we have, you know, this contract in front of us with a couple of people's names in it and some questions of fairness, in my view. And, you know, so let me just ask a couple more questions. And I'm not trying to put Bill on the spot or anything. I just don't know if this feels right. I know this doesn't feel right to me yet.
Excuse me, Councilor. Could I have a point of information? I am extremely uncomfortable with this discussion because two individuals are named, and I think this has to violate some decency about these, even though you don't want to say who they are, we shouldn't be talking about them. They are named in this, and I don't think it's appropriate to be discussing individuals and their positions. So I really feel that we should stop this discussion and just talk about other things in it. And I think we should all be so happy that residency is in it. But, Mr. President, it's making me very uncomfortable with people being named. We all know them, and we know their work.
Well, Councilor Allen has the floor. We'll allow him to continue if you would like a legal opinion on whether or not...
That would be nice.
That would be great.
Especially since they're not here to defend themselves.
...executive session. He's still on contract negotiations.
Right.
Second.
Well, Council Walsh has requested an opinion from the law department?
Well, I'd be happy for executive session. You know, these people are not here to defend themselves. I think it's very unfair.
Council Williams?
As a city, I don't believe we handle grievances. It's not our job to handle grievances. We have a matter before us...
With residency.
Which the director is saying was appropriately negotiated. It's before us. Grievances are for the grievance committee. And I would be really pressed that this Council Walsh is leading to, to really start talking about personalities. If you like the contract, you vote it up. You don't like it, you vote it down. I've never, in 20 years I've been here, ever had this kind of a display of questioning a contract. And if we did that, I had the teachers' contract that was plenty of grievances. You don't stop the contract and say, let's go and talk about it. That's none of our business, from my estimation. I don't think we talk about grievances. And the city solicitor, I think, is prepared to give us an opinion.
So Council Walsh has requested an opinion from the law department?
That's fine.
Attorney Davis?
I'm not exactly sure what the issue is here, but if the issue is to discuss a grievance, that would not be proper in this setting at this time.
Okay, that's fine.
Council Allen, are you all set?
Yeah, so my question is, I defer...
What about naming individuals, bringing their name out in the discussion? Is there any guidance on that, Mr. Solicitor?
My understanding is they are named in the contract. And the contract's a public document. I believe Councilor Allen is trying to be careful not to speak of them, but to speak of the substance of that. So long as we're not debating a grievance here, so long as we're not talking about the performance of these individuals in something that, under the open meeting law, they would have a right to notice, they would have a right to be here, they would have a right to bring counsel. Depending on what the subject matter is, they may have a right to go into executive or keep it in open session. So we should be careful where we tread. And if I understand this, to the extent this applies to the city, as opposed to the individuals, the discussion would be appropriate.
So I'll finish my comments in a minute or two. There are questions here about how this process came to pass. And when I was looking through the contract, I saw it, and it looked unusual. So I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. And I think my little list of things I wanted to bring up, I think I have brought them up, except maybe one is that, well, I believe, I think I already said this, that the union president is the person named.
We don't know that.
Anyway, I'll drop my comments at this point, and let's see if anyone else wants to ask questions.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Any other questions or comments from the council before we go to vote? Any motions or amendments? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the contract, Counsel Edwards? Yes. Counsel Allen?
No.
No. Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twigs absent. Counsel Shea?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes. More than sufficient, collective bargaining agreement is ratified.
Item number 14, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 14 is an order to transfer $450,000 from free cash to the police department's pay-go account.
Good evening, Mr. President. Jen Winkler from the police department is here to answer specific questions, but the request before you is to transfer $450,000 from certified free cash to the pay-go account to purchase 10 police vehicles. We have an aging fleet, and we're looking to address how to make sure that we can maintain the fleet appropriately. You may recall, last year, we did 25 vehicles through a bond issuance. This year, we're doing 10 through this, and we're looking ways to address it. If you have any specific questions about the financing piece of it or the vehicles, Jen and I have to answer questions.
Council Williams?
We have 10 new vehicles. 10 new vehicles?
Yeah, this will be to purchase 10 new vehicles.
And when will they arrive?
Well, this will allow us to get the process rolling, so it's probably a couple of months. I don't know. It takes six months to make sure that they're received and fully outfitted.
And I don't want to get into any details because I don't want to reveal any security plans that you folks have. But could I ask you a quick question? Is anybody from the police department here? I got a lateral question. Just in terms, I was at the Chamber luncheon the other day, had the motorcycle cops route, and they look real good. I'm very serious. And as folks in urban areas begin to have more cops on bicycles, they seem to be a better crime deterrent than cars. Do we have a plan to get more motorcycle cops on the street? Maybe you can answer that, maybe you can't.
We do. I'm actually looking at the captain of the downtown unit. He's here today. He can speak a little bit more specifically on our metro unit, but we always have a plan to have more motorcycles and electric vehicles out.
And I'm talking all over this, not just downtown.
Right.
You need to be all over the city of Springfield.
Absolutely.
They are very, they're the tier crime. People like them. It's almost like community policing. They can maneuver, get to situations in the flash, and it's easy to down streets. And maybe Chairman Ash can have a meeting with the brass up at the station and talk a little bit about it. I'd like to know exactly what the plan is. The summer's coming. The summer's coming, it's going to be a hot summer, and we know it. So, hopefully, we'll have, get some, and they look real good, and they were, they were very visible, and people really appreciated them, they really did.
Thank you, absolutely, we can get that to you, sir.
Counselor Ash.
To Counsel Williams' point and question, I think it's a good idea, I think we will have, immediately have that discussion. I think there are several options that the department has in front of it, I know those Italian-made, three-wheel motorcycle types are available, as well as the motorcycles themselves, and so I think it does add a nice presence to the downtown and to our neighborhoods, and so it's a question I think that's, it's worth exploring and getting some feedback from the department. Jen, on these vehicles, will this effectively eliminate the sedans? Will this be a full complement of all four-wheel-drive vehicles now? I know we're going towards that, is this...
Right, we purchased 25 last time we came up under a bond, and we've purchased all SUVs, and we're hoping to purchase another 10 SUVs.
And so, will this, will this...
We do have some Stragglers.
Do have some.
Yeah, but we use them for parts, and we use them for backup vehicles, so...
But eventually, we'll get to that, where we'll all, the fleet will be, oh, okay.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the transfer, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 15, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 15 is a budget transfer within the police department of $300,000.
Good evening, Council, we do have an amended order that Clerk Anthony is going to pass around. It basically updates the object codes that we need the money in. We have a surplus, we have 50 vacancies in our, and that's what, how many are going into our academy, and we like to use that money to pay for the academy, and those costs would include tasers, excuse me, tasers, guns, vests, medical supplies, everything that we need, basically, to get the academy started.
We'll need a motion to accept this into the, into the record. Motion made by Counselor Ash, seconded by Counselor Edwards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Are there any questions from the council? Say again, are there any questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the transfer, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 16.
Item number 16 is a budget transfer across departments, the fire, from the fire department's personal services to the finances pay-go capital account in amount of $170,000.
Thank you, Mr. President, now through you to the council. This order is similar to the police order, is there are five vehicles, four pickup trucks and a sedan, that are, need to be replaced in the fire department for arson, training unit, and fire prevention divisions. So, we're looking to have the transfer from these salary savings in the fire department into the pay-go capital account, so we can purchase the vehicles.
Moved.
Counsel, any questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the transfer, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 18. Sorry, item number 17.
Item number 17 is a budget transfer to the snow and ice deficit account in the amount of $166,780.53.
Good evening, councilors. Item number 17 is procedural for the DPW this year, our $1.6 million snow budget. We've overspent by $166,780 into deficit spending, and the transfer is from the free cash account to balance that, that section of our department off for this year.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
On approving the transfer, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, transfer is approved. Item number 18.
Item number 18 is a budget transfer to the snow and ice deficit account in the amount of $65,000. The transfer will come out of free cash to purchase those, to have them ready for next fall.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to point out these two items, we just voted one, the budget transfer, and when we talked about it in the committee meeting, I think it was important just to understand, this one is about four pieces of equipment that they're able, that they're able to purchase now, a couple snow plows, the actual plow that's in front of the truck, et cetera, and a couple other items. The other one, the previous one that we already voted, that was the amount that we need more, needed for more, for snow plow this year. So, just, if you put a number in your head, we had 1.6 budgeted to remove snow this year, and we needed another $160,000 or so, so it's 1.76 is what ends up to be our number on budget, on snow and ice removal this year. A little more than we had, about 10% more than we had in the budget, but not bad, considering we had some storms. So, just to point out that, so just, I think everybody should kind of have that number, 1.76, we actually had budgeted 1.6, okay, so, thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Say again, are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
On approving the transfer, Counsel Edwards.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, transfer is approved.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. Item number 19.
Item number 19 is a budget transfer across departments in amount of $40,500.
Good evening, councilors. This is money being transferred by Treasurer's Professional Service item, where we expect a surplus to cover the increased advertising and legal costs for doing the annual tax taken.
Any questions from the council? Say again, any questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the transfer, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, transfer is approved.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. Item number 19.
Item number 19 is a budget transfer across departments in amount of $40,500.
Good evening, councilors. This is money being transferred by Treasurer's Professional Service item, where we expect a surplus to cover the increased advertising and legal costs for doing the annual tax taken.
Any questions from the council? Say again, any questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the transfer, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, transfer is approved. Next item?
Item number 20 is a budget transfer within a department in the amount of $150,299.36.
Good evening, councilor, this money is necessary to stabilize our snow removal line item for the facilities division.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
On approving the transfer, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twiggs absent. Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, transfer is approved.
Item number 21.
Item number 21 is a zone change for the property at, for the property at, on Boston Road and Morton Street. This is for first reading and referral to the planning board.
Mr. Clerk, just in terms of our process, what would we be voting on tonight?
Under, under Chapter 48, the body has received the, basically, it's an application for the zone change, and it automatically will be referred to the planning board.
So, we're voting to receive the report?
Correct. We're receiving the application for a zone change.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk?
Counsel Williams.
Last Monday, this matter was, was just received? Did they vote on this?
No, no. The body, under the, under the zoning statute, the city council receives applications for zone changes. They are automatically then referred to the planning board for a report to be generated, that report then comes back to this body for a hearing.
Okay, is this the same matter that was voted on? Oh, this is, this is Lamont Street and Morton.
This is a new zone change.
Oh, this is the, yeah, Mr. President, I would hope that, well, is this where there's a mound of dirt on the corner?
I believe so.
Counsel Williams, is that mound of dirt? Is this the corner there? That's Lamont? That's Lamont? That's not it?
The former Russell site.
Because I'm on the warpath.
So, this, so this vote would be just to accept, receive the report?
Yes, to receive the application.
This is Lamont?
Voice vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Next item, Mr. Clerk.
The remaining items are under suspension.
from 12 to 16, basically eight in the Canor Street, Lyman Street area, and eight at Riverfront Park. The second change in 279-44, Section B, it says Lyman Street, it should say Lyman and Canor Street because it's basically both of those streets. With regard to the fees that Counselor Walsh was referring to, the request that came through as part of the ordinance is a application fee of $200 with a quarterly fee of $75, which basically is $500 a year. The DPW's preference, excuse me, is a $75 application fee, and the only reason we're requesting $75, that's the same as all of our fees in the DPW, so we don't have one fee being different, and a quarterly fee of 150, which is higher than what is being requested. From a DPW perspective, we give out occupancy permits in the city all the time. This one would probably be about 15 to 20% of what another person would be paying if they were doing construction and needed to occupy a parking space for the same period of time. So from an issue of fairness, a lot of the complaints I have received from contractors is, you know, why do I have to pay something huge where somebody who's going to be making money is going to be paying a lot less? The last item is fines. In the ordinance that was presented to you, it's a $300 a day fine if there's any sort of violation that is determined. The DPW basically has a $750 flat fine plus $100 a day. And my request on that is simply that is what we charge any violation that we deal with on our occupancy manual, just in order to be able to, for us to keep things separate or standard, excuse me, with regard to all of our permits. So the first two items that I talked about, the, the change in the numbers, is what was agreed upon at the, um, subcommittee meeting the other day, and the item change adding Canor Street was just an oversight in the ordinance to add that in. So what really needs to be determined tonight is what we're dealing with for fees and what we're dealing with for fines.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Signoli's points about the permitting fees, initially, initially, the, the YP Subcommittee, we, we conjoined and talked about that $500 fee, the 75 over each quarter, which there's four quarters, and then the $200 initial applicant fee for a total of $500. And speaking to Mr. Signoli at the last Subcommittee meeting, I think that we're talking about a matter of $150 over the course of four quarter, quarters, which is the differential. And I think that it does make sense, especially looking at from a contractor's point of view, to, to make that consideration. I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think it's certainly feasible for those who are looking to get into the business. In relation to the fines, I would again kind of defer to Mr. Signoli's point and keep that consistent with the occupancy manual as is. Now, just in terms of speaking about the ordinance as a whole, a lot of, a lot of work went into this, a lot of legwork. We met with the Springfield Police Department, we've met with the Arberry Quadrangle Civic Association, the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee. If you, the councilors see in front of them, there is actually a letter from Senator Lester on your desk, who is also voicing his support for this, for this ordinance. And I'll just read a couple sentences. It says, "This proposed mobile food truck ordinance will enable greater opportunities for entrepreneurs and the growing food truck industry to succeed in Springfield and economic boost that would affect the whole city in a positive way. And it's my sincere hope that this ordinance and the accompanying amendments to the occupancy manual and permit application are approved." So I think in totality, the, the city, meeting with the vendors on a separate occasion, meeting with and actually canvassing the food trucks in the city, and I have to admit, I definitely got a couple hot dogs along the way. But it's, it's certainly something that is needed. I think that Springfield needs this boost. When you go to Detroit, when you go to Hartford, you see congregant food trucks that are thriving, that have a lot of foot traffic, and it's something, Springfield's on the cusp of something great here, and I mean, I think we should be keeping up along the trend. And I also have to thank Counselor Walsh for giving me another vantage point and seeing how successful these mobile food trucks would actually be. Standing at Union Station, there's actually an underground tunnel, and above it, it says, "Entrance to Lyman Street." Now, when you walk to Lyman Street, there's going to be potentially six to eight food trucks out there waiting for the patrons who have frequented the, the Union Station. So I think this is a great, great way to drive an entrepreneurial spirit in this city. That is not, that has not been the case ever. The way that mobile food trucks have operated, they, they, they're not regulated at all. So people who have food trucks, they get ticketed, we heard it last time, upwards of $100, $200 a day. And this ordinance alleviates those issues, especially in the downtown district, with having six mobile food trucks in Lyman Street with a potential of eight, and six on Riverfront, again, with a potential of eight. So I would really urge this body tonight to vote in favor of the mobile food truck ordinance. A lot of people are waiting, have received a lot of calls even since the last meeting with, you know, anticipation of this passing. So I think I want to also give a, a round of applause, if I can, to the young professional, former Subcommittee Chair, who drove this home alongside myself and those who've worked on it previously, prior to me being elected. This was a group effort, and hopefully we could see this to, to the, the finish as a, as a group as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Nice job, Marcus.
Counsel Fenton.
Mr. Clerk, just, just a point of order. So the changes to the occupancy manual can be done with one vote? Is that correct?
Manual, yes.
Occupancy manual is subject to the ordinance. So whatever the fees are, as listed in the ordinance, have to be in the occupancy manual.
But the, but it would be an order that approves the occupancy manual, and it would be an ordinance, it would be an ordinance requiring three separate votes that enables those changes. Okay, so in light of that, and in light of what Mr. Signoli said earlier, I would make a motion that we table the occupancy manual until we take third, third and final step on the ordinance.
Motion made by Counsel Fenton, seconded by Counsel Rook to table the matter. Item number 22. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Any other questions from the council? This is on, Counsel Fenton. Item 23.
Calling item number 23. Okay, so there was a little bit of, there's two things that I wanted to discuss. The first is the fee schedule, and so, you know, there's been some back and forth on this, and I was hoping maybe Counsel Walsh or somebody else that was able to attend that Subcommittee meeting could provide us with some insight about what the differing opinions are on the, on the fee structure.
Well, Counsel Fenton, as you know, when this came before us to discuss, before it was referred to committee, we had some very passionate discussion. And the question of fairness was raised by one of our colleagues, which is why we spent a lot of time in committee talking about the lottery, the occupancy, how many, and so forth. And we had testimony from, from the bid, we had testimony from the DPW, and we also had testimony from other individuals not connected to the council who, who showed up. And there was agreement that if there would be language, that it would go from six to eight, that would solve the problem and take care of that problem, and everybody would think that it was, that it was fair. So we, we agreed to that. We disagreed on the fees. And Counsel Gomez, I don't know if you want to speak to that because that was your issue.
So just on the, well, yeah, I mean, I will be interested to hear what other people have to say, but just on that issue of eight, I'd like to hear what Counsel Gomez has to say.
It's not, if, I can clarify, it's not written in stone, but if you need it to be eight, it will be there.
Counsel Gomez.
All right. Realistically, last meeting, I stated that, you know, I think a lottery would have been appropriate because of, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, once people, you opened it up, what kind of scared me was when Chris Signoli stated that it was first come, first served. And honestly, I just felt that before we dealt with a situation of, well, you guys lined up the six you guys wanted, and you left us in the dark, you know, so I wanted to make sure that it was to create an awareness of fairness, that no matter if it was six hot dog trucks that got picked, they got picked fairly. So moving forward, I met with Council, Councilman Williams, and I, we determined that the sunset clause that's in this ordinance, that we can, because what the bid has stated and some other contributing organizations to this ordinance, that they don't believe that six folks would, would apply or want these specific locations, which I'm the counselor of Ward One, and I realistically see things on, at a vantage point, which, um, taking a tour of Union Station, that's when I guess Counsel Williams seen exactly the point that I was trying to address, specifically that the bid is going to spend $12,000 marketing, which majority of these food trucks that the ordinance is going to have, wouldn't have that possibility to get somebody to market for them in that specific district. So that's why I created the, the conversation of the awareness, and it was so passionate, because I felt like it was a, a pick-me-up. It was something that, a breath of fresh air, that people could get off the PVTA or the train that comes in, and they have to wait. Instead of buying something at one of the kiosks, probably they wanted to take a walk down where Dairy Way and Stern Square, which is going to be developed. So I looked at all of that kind of an alleyway of being in the middle of, of, of my district. So I wanted to make sure that the, the people selected there, also, I think I have, I, I asked, because I think it's, once they create, they, they, they get chosen for this position, it's quarterly, so some of these folks can buy in for like, say, just the summer months or the fall, but then it keeps it open for the other, for the other couple months, like the cold months. So realistically, we thought that if, just to, you know, because it's going to come back, if we did get like, uh, an enormous, um, uh, vol, uh, volume of applicants that we couldn't serve, then probably we can move forward into looking into a kind of a lottery situation, and we'll just see because the other proposed site in River, Riverfront isn't going to be available yet, but we can see what we can do with the six to eight. And I asked Mr. Signoli that, is there enough space to give the two, give two more in case maybe two or three more were, were put in application and, and, and we can, you know, accommodate that. So I was willingly to agree, that I thought that, I guess that's fair, and then we can revisit it within a year and see exactly where it fits. And, and, and I know that we're going to run it through some, some housekeeping stuff throughout, outside of this specific district that we're talking about, but with food trucks in general, outside of, of the downtown district. But I, I felt that adding two more would alleviate that pressure, because I just felt that more people knowingly that all these contributing factors, because remember, Chris Signoli has also stated that the food trucks outside of the state aren't going to be allowed to come into the district, but that doesn't stop, you know, food trucks from Westfield, Worcester, any of those, once they catch wind, that would want to collapse between MGM and also the, the Union Station. So, um, for the, I'm willing to support this tonight. I think all of you guys have done some good work. I've been, you know, um, with it since the beginning. I just wanted it to make sure that people get selected fairly. And that's why I was so passionate about it. Maybe I should have been a little bit cooler, but I honestly think that we're ready to, to move forward and pass this.
Nice job, Adam.
Any other questions from the council? Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. I simply want to, as some of you did last time, and I didn't speak on it, I want to congratulate Counselor Marcus Williams. This was yeoman's work. This, it's hard to do new ordinances when you're new on the council, year and a half. Just took a lot of steady, eddy, on the, on the pedal kind of stuff and sticking with it, and I admire you for the work you did.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, before we vote on this, there, we, we still have the issue of the fee schedule. Is there any, anyone else who would like to speak on that? Counsel Fenton?
Mr. President, I, I'm not speaking on it because I, I support it as it's drafted, but just so that the council is aware in case there are any other opinions. The way the proposal exists, as was recommended by the authors, is that there be an initial application fee annually of $200 and a quarterly permit fee of $75. That equates to $500 a year. And the reason for the quarterly fee of $75 is that some vendors may not wish to operate a food truck when there's snow on the ground, something to that effect.
Counsel Gomez.
Just a question for Mr. Signoli. If, on the occupancy of construction permits, how much, if, if they needed it for the whole year, that specific spot, how much would that cost versus the food truck?
It's $75 fee, $35 a day. So it's, we're up to about $1,400, $1,500 for a year.
For the year?
Yeah.
All right, and with what you're proposing to keep it kind of in line, how much more would a food truck pay?
If my, my request versus what's in there, it's $175.
All right.
It's close from 500 to 675.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think any of us had a, a problem with, with that fee structure, but I was wondering myself if the councilors felt that the fines were steep. I don't know if there's any discussion on that. I kind of thought that the $300 a day was steep for people, the fines. Can you explain the fines, Mr. Signoli?
Basically, what we are trying to do is deter people from performing this without a license, so therefore they get fined. And if there's a fine outstanding, they will not be able to apply. One of the problems that we have with things such as parking tickets that are 10, 15, $20, is they absorb it as part of their cost and just park wherever they would like to. We wanted to make the fines steeper to get people legal, is basically the best way that we want to do it, so that they can comply with the ordinances. And when we're dealing with things such as trash, basically every Monday morning, we get a call for a lot of places around the city to go pick up trash from food vendors who have just left it. So right now, if somebody's located in an area, we're able to find them. So we want them steep enough so that people will comply with the rules and regulations. And those, those fines are in line with all of, the, the fine that I'm recommending is in line with all of the other fines for contractors who do work without permits, who are excavating in the road, who don't restore areas correctly. So we're, my suggestion was just to keep it in line with the rest of our, our fine, our, uh, fine standards that we have.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Any final comments, amendments? Seeing none. This is first step on the Mobile Food Truck Ordinance. Voice vote is required. All those in favor-
Excuse me, Mr. President, we would need an amendment to change the numbers and to change the street name.
Counsel Marcus Williams.
I make an amendment to Mr. Signoli's point to cha, to include Canor Street with Lyman. But I, thank you. And I also make the amendment to change the permitting fee schedule, or structure, I should say, to the, what is it? Mr. Signoli, can you please say that again?
$75 application fee, $150 a quarter.
A quarter.
And six to eight.
Motion made by Counsel Williams for an amendment, seconded by Counsel Edwards. On the motion, Counsel Fenton.
I guess that's, that'll get sort of to the part of it. I, I, I'm more comfortable with the $500, but I, I think that a simple majority rule will, will help to flush it out. What's most important to me is that we get it passed. I understand Mr. Signoli's point in terms of consistency with the occupancy manual, but a lot of time is put into analyzing what other communities are doing in terms of their fee structures. And based on that testimony that we've seen in those committees, I felt much more comfortable with the number of $500 annually versus something just north of 600. I don't think this is an issue where we should be throwing the baby out with the bathwater, but I just wanted to voice my opposition to that aspect of the amendment.
Counsel Gomez.
I had a question. Do we have to amend it from six to eight?
Yes, we also need to do that.
All right, so I want to make an amendment to, if more than six apply, more than six apply, then we'll push it to eight? I don't know exactly, I don't want to say push it, but.
Remend the spots from six to eight.
The way that it, I'm sorry, Counselor. The way, the way that we have it proposed is Section 279 point, or dash 44, the first paragraph, change the number from 12 to 16.
Right.
And on the next page, A, change the number six to eight, and on B, change it from six to eight and add Canor Street. That takes into account both of the numbers and the street name.
I want to amend those numbers that he said.
So there's a motion on the floor by Counsel Williams. I will ask the clerk to make note. It will entertain that motion afterwards.
No, okay.
Anyone else on the motion? Mr. Clerk, would you please clarify the first amended proposal?
The first amendment by Counselor Marcus Williams is to amend Section 279-44, Subsection B, to include Lyman Street and Canor Street.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next amendment?
The second amendment by Counselor Marcus Williams is to amend Sections 279-47, Subsections A and B, so that the annual application fee goes from $200 to $75, and the quarterly fee goes from $75 to $150.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Shay. Any discussion?
It was already seconded by Counsel Edwards.
It's already been.
Vote for them all?
That's the second one. The first one was seconded by Counsel Rook.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Next one, Mr. Clerk.
The next amendment is made by Counselor Gomez. That amendment is, again, to 279, Section 44, to Sections A, I'm sorry, Sections A and B. That is to change six permits to eight on Section A and to change six permits to eight on Section B.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Counsel Shay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Any further discussion on the ordinance? Are there any other amendments?
Any other item that was discussed were the fines.
Ah, the fines.
Is there a motion on the floor? Seeing none. This is first step for the Mobile Food Truck Ordinance. Voice vote is required. All those in favor of first step, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? We'll take second step, and, uh, second and third step at the next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Item number 24 is Counselor Gomez's May Day Resolution.
Now, before we take up the next item, I just want to express to those who are still here for this item to please be respectful of counselors, allow all counselors to express their opinions. Please, no disruption. We still have police officers in the room. Those of you who will, if anyone begins a chant, I will ask the police officers to have them removed. Believe me, I'm a co-sponsor of this ordinance, and I want to have a healthy debate. A co-sponsor of this resolution, and so I just want to have a, a healthy, respectful debate on this matter. Counsel Gomez.
Mr. President, thank you. I would like to amend the, um, the finished resolution into order. Um, the clerk is passing it around. You're right. I'm going to read the whole amendment, but do I need a second amendment?
There's a motion on the floor to accept the completed version of the resolution by Counsel Gomez. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Edwards. All those in favor, say aye. This is just to accept it into the record, not to approve the resolution. Clarification, Mr. Clerk?
Well, I would say procedurally, the first thing that Counselor Gomez could do is to read the amendment into the record. If any council wants to second it, they can second it, then there can be a debate on the amendment, then there can be a debate, a debate on passage of the resolution.
So I'm going to, I'm going to read the amendment to the, to the resolution. City Council in the City of Springfield, May 1, 2017, "Whereas the City of Springfield strives to be a diverse and inclusive world-class urban community where people unite to form a caring, learning, participating, sustainable community in which each person is important. And whereas the City of Springfield has racially, ethnically, and culturally diverse populations, and more than 61% of our residents are Hispanic, Latino, African-American, Asian-American, or multiracial. And whereas, an estimated 3% of this population of the City of Springfield is comprised of undocumented immigrants contributing significantly to the city's overall economic activity. And whereas, the economic benefit of this population to the local economy includes millions of dollars in tax, in tax revenue each year in the form of Social Security payroll taxes, state and local sales tax, and local property taxes paid as rent to local landlords. And whereas, public trust and law enforcement is vital to promote public safety and encouraging victims of crimes to contact the authorities. And whereas, the Springfield Police Department prides itself on the positive relationship that it has maintained with the community, including its immigrant community, and maintenance of positive relationships are key to keeping our neighborhoods safe. And whereas, a scientific peer-reviewed study conducted in four major cities in 2013 found that 40% of all Latinos, regardless of immigration status, were less likely to call police if they were a victim of crime for fear that the police will ask them or someone they know about their immigration status. And whereas, regardless of one's personal views regarding- And whereas, regardless of one's personal views regarding illegal immigration, in the city of Springfield, we believe our capacity to maximize public safety depends on the ability of our residents to interact with our local law enforcement, law enforcement authorities without fear of negative immigration consequences. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the Springfield City Council in regular session assembled the following: that officers of the Springfield Police Department will not inquire into the immigration status of any individual unless the officer believes that the knowledge of the individual's immigration status is essential to the proper investigation of a violation of Massachusetts criminal law and the officers have obtained prior approval from a superior officer. Two, that the Springfield Police Department will not detain non-citizens at the request of a federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, absent to a valid judicial warrant issued by a federal judge or federal magistrate judge, except in the limited situations wherein alleged perpetrator has been charged with a crime constituting a felony under Massachusetts law and ICE requests the SPD to hold the arrestee absent judicial warrant. Three, that the city of Springfield and the Springfield Police Department will not enter in a contractual agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security or its sub-agencies under the provisions of section 287G of the INA, United States Congress, thirteen seventeen, of any other agreement that deputizes local law enforcement against to perform immigration enforcement functions. Four, no provision of this resolution shall be construed as prohibiting the Springfield Police Department from investigating, questioning, or arresting violators of a criminal law or violators of local Springfield ordinances. And nothing in this resolution shall be construed as limiting the ability of the Springfield Police Department to participate in task force with the federal law enforcement agencies.
Mr. President, if I could just make a one, point out one procedural point for the body. So, currently, before the body is essentially, is the same document with only the first four paragraphs. This amendment would essentially complete the resolution and put the rest of the document here. If the resolution fails, the, if the amendment fails, the resolution will still be before the body, except it will only be in the form of those first four paragraphs.
Can you clarify, are the paragraphs the ones that are numbered?
If you look on your agenda, if you look on your original agenda, it should be the last item. Only the first four paragraphs of this document that you're looking at are, were submitted to the council.
Okay.
So, the remainder, to have the remaining, the remaining language come before the body, this amendment has to pass. If the amendment doesn't pass, there will still be a vote on the passage of the language that is currently in the packet.
And just to clarify it for me, but you are referring to the numbered items, correct? That they cannot be voted on unless the resolution passes. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that any, that any language that is not already in your packet requires the amendment. And from my reading of it, it's everything beyond the first four paragraphs of that document that you're holding.
Okay.
The first four whereas paragraphs.
Okay.
Actually, the first two.
Thank you.
The first two whereas.
Yeah, thank you.
First two whereas.
Thank you for the clarification.
Counsel Gomez still has the floor. Counsel Edwards.
I believe Counselor Gomez made a motion for the amendment, and I'm seconding the motion on the amendment to include the entirety of the document that has been presented to us tonight.
Motion made by Counsel Gomez, seconded by Counsel Edwards. Are there any questions on the amendment? Seen none?
Amendment is to add, excuse me, all the other paragraphs of this document onto this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On amending the resolution as described by Counsel Gomez, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
No.
No, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
No.
No, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
No.
No, Counsel Twigs, absent Counsel Shay?
No.
No, Counsel Fenton?
No.
No, Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams?
No.
No, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Not sufficient, motion fails. So, where does that leave us, Mr. Clerk? Do we, we still have to take a vote on?
Now, the vote is on the language as it exists in the original agenda packet, which is, includes only the first two paragraphs from the amended language that Counselor Gomez articulated.
Counsel Gomez.
So, is that all this stuff up here?
I just want to start off by saying thank you for the support and thank you, the ones that didn't. This resolution is anti-cop, and I understand that a lot of you have strong ties when it comes to, to the police. So do I. So do I. I have more than ten relatives that work for the police right now. I work with C-3. I work with E-3. One thing that I championed and we made right, but realistically, is something that we haven't done is make sure that residents are safe. And that's okay. You know, because it's non-binding, it's not a resolution, and you know, from where we're going now, this wasn't about a political stance, it wasn't about a tug, a tug of war with administration or with sanctuary, because this realistically, this language at the bottom that we didn't put in, into record, was actually just the ask that we asked our mayor to meet with us, to ask about what about these specific stuff without putting sanctuary in the proposal. And everybody understands and knows that a federal judge in California stated that it was unconstitutional and CBPG funds cannot be held within, away from our municipality. Some people stated that they felt hijacked because I didn't call them or I didn't speak to them about it. But realistically, this was a conversation that I was having with these folks. I sat with specific counselors. You would have had this, you would have had this if somebody specifically told me that, listen, I'm good, I'm not going to rock with it, I'm not going to go with it, and you would have had it last week. And to give that person that, that chance, that honor, you know, that respect, I didn't put it in, and I didn't contact anybody. And that's the truth. Realistically, I talked to everybody. I talked to my Facebook, I got in trouble for that. I talked to regular people on the street, homeless, undocumented veterans. You guys unanimously stood in solidarity with the Muslim Resolution in October. Shame on you guys. God bless you guys, though. I have respect for all of you regardless of this, but realistically, you know, you can't do one and not the other. It just doesn't make sense. And honestly, and this is not bashing any of them because I respect all of you because I've learned something from every single one of you, and I've supported every single one of you. And I'm not, I'm not upset. I'm just like, you know, there's some things that young counselors got to learn, but there's one thing you can't learn is that it doesn't matter what language you speak, where you come from, anything like that. I know that I speak one, one specific thing, and that's community. I make sure that families, families, families come first. So, when you're warden, you're warden, when you have somebody that comes to you and a kid comes home and their mom and dad's not here because they expanded ICE in the city of Springfield, I want you to talk about that influx then. Because it's not about the people that vote for you, it's about the voters that are going to be created. Because maybe their parents aren't documented. But you know who is documented and who will be documented and who will remember this day? Are those kids. Maybe some of you guys won't live to that day, but hey, what it is, is your legacy. What do you want to be remembered for? You want to stand with people or stand with the problem? And in the end, people were given chances, and it's not a secret. You guys know this was the rhetoric, and still, the whole time, nobody has came out to talk for the people. Not one. Not one. You say you're counselors for the people, but not one time in this instance, you stood with them.
Oh, that's something.
Sixty-one percent of this city is Latino. And once black and brown come together, there's another problem. It's not our problem, it's yours. God bless you all.
Counsel Shay.
Mr. President, this is a very emotional issue, but I want to speak to the larger piece of this, not to the piece that I voted or I think anybody else here voted because we are in cahoots with the police. We are, after all, a nation of laws. And the law is the great equalizer in this country. It makes the rich man and the poor man equal. It makes the black man and the white man equal. It makes me pay my taxes the same day that you pay yours. It makes me stop at a stop sign and everybody else stop at a stop sign. And so, the symbol of justice in this country is a woman. A sword in one hand, a scale balanced in the other, and a blindfold. And when we take that blindfold off, we're never going to get it put back on. And we can't be a body or a nation that picks and chooses which laws we're going to enforce. Because the problem there is, if you do that, what are you going to do when they come after you? We have to enforce the laws on the books. If we don't like those laws, we change those laws. But we cannot pick and choose because next week, another group will come down and want some other law that they're not in favor of, that they'd like to see not enforced. And so, this was done by me because I believe first in the rule of law. And I haven't a problem with the government changing the law, but the laws that are in effect, I've taken and everyone on this board has taken an oath to uphold. And it's interesting that the oath of office for the city councils in Springfield, you taken oath to uphold the local laws, the state laws, and the federal laws. It's all part of the oath. But that's, that's a minor thing. As I said, Mr. President, this is an emotional item, but we must first be a nation that upholds and respects all the laws and not pick the ones we like today and go with those and the ones we don't like, we throw out, because that could change. And that's the purpose of my vote, and I would like to thank the vote really of most of the people who did not vote for this.
I'm not going to stand here and criticize any of my colleagues for their votes. I just like to get something off of my chest. My last name is Edwards, and if you look up Edwards, you'll find it, it's an English name. But I'm the descendant of people that were brought here on a ship stacked like cordwood. I have a background through the West Indies. My family, I assume, was brought here to pick sugarcane, because in most places in Europe, you can't get sugarcane. And you know, sugarcane is what you make rum with. I've learned a lot in the last few weeks about the English, as Melvin Edwards, the guy with the English name, and how they treated the Irish. And I even read about the ports that the English actually sailed out of when they were taking food out of Ireland in an attempt to starve this whole nation of people. I just want to remind my colleagues, because as I look around the room, we're, I believe by the last names of many of my colleagues, that many of you are descendants of the Irish. And I think about the fact of where I happen to be today, with my mother coming from the South to pick fruit and vegetables, and my father being from the West Indies coming into New England to pick fruits and vegetables, and the advantages it had brought to me. If you take a deep breath and think about how fortunate you are at this point in your lives, and think about what your grandparents went through when they came here, this is the type of law that would have benefited them. And there was a time when the Irish were being treated just like we are treating people from South America, from Mexico, and unfortunately, from the island of Puerto Rico, and they're American citizens. And part of the reason for we need to even have this conversation is because quite often, people don't take the opportunity to actually think before that they're enforcing the law on a level in equal playing field, and they're making the assumption, just because you're brown, that you're here illegally. I'm, as I said, I'm not here to criticize anybody, but I needed to just get that off my chest, how fortunate I am in this part of time, that I wasn't born two hundred years ago and I hadn't been born Irish and had to deal with all of the abuse and the way that the police used to treat your grandparents. So, the thing is, is right now, I hear constantly about the migrational changes around the city of Springfield, and I'm quite, and I'm quick to remind people that I used to be the paperboy along Riverham Road from Riverham Avenue all the way to Roosevelt Avenue between Riverham Road and Western Circle, and there were no Spanish people. The closest thing is in the late early sixties that I knew of a Spanish person was my Cuban friends. So, yes, the neighborhoods have changed, but you know, Mason Square wasn't always a black central community. Some of us remember when it was Winchester Square and it was a vibrant neighborhood, and the demographics were different then. But if you read your history books and go back just a little bit further, you'll find that it used to be called a Highland neighborhood. And my wife is French-Canadian, who can trace her family through Canada back to 1647, and she was born in the south end, a north end of Springfield, and then moved to the north and migrated to Slough Meadow. We just got to remember where we are today. And I didn't read anything in this that stopped the police in Springfield from hiring, I mean, from enforcing the laws. When people talk about enforcement of laws and how laws are bad or how we have to kind of like keep laws in place, when my descendants were in chains in your cotton fields, it was legal, and that's what the law allowed. Right now, right now, you and all of us in this room that are elected have the benefit of our position, station, and title at this moment. That sixty percent change in demographics is going to continue. And if you look around this chamber, you have a historic number of people of color on this council. There is a chance within the next fifteen to twenty years that they may only, as we have right now, we have one female on our council. There may come a time when there's only one Irish person on this council. Okay? Let's think about where we are and how fortunate we are in this position. So, when these resolutions come up, this is not even an ordinance. It's no, it's nothing more than just a statement of our support of people who have been downtrodden, who are more likely to have negative interactions or feel like they're not a part of the system that they contribute to. So, I just needed to get that off my chest. It doesn't change anybody's opinion or view, and it might even change some people's opinion of me. I get lots of criticism no matter what I say, but I just felt like I needed to say what I did, and I hope it's well received and not seen as a criticism of my colleagues who I have utmost respect for. And as you guys all know, there's nobody in this chamber that I haven't argued with on a point at some time or another, but I just needed to say what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't be long-winded not to say, Counselor, that you were, but I will say that in looking at, you know, when I first got into office and looking at the difference between a resolution and ordinance, whatever the case may be, a resolution is simply an urge. We're, you know, we're standing by language, hoping to urge the powers that be or whoever to form some, some sort of action. So, the illusion that this is, becomes law is baffling to me. But I will speak to, I'm not going to touch a race because I think it's been touched on enough, but I will speak to one thing called intimate partner violence that's not spoken about enough. I used to be the grant writer at the YWC of Western Massachusetts, and I got to tell you something that I saw on a daily basis that helped me form that yes out of my mouth just now, and that is seeing women come into the center who were fleeing an abusive relationship. Now, these women, doesn't matter if you're Russian, doesn't matter if you're Chinese, doesn't matter which you are, they had physical ailments and physical wounds that described what their abuser put them through. That's simple. I saw it every day. So, and looking at this resolution, if a woman is actually bold enough, because honestly, you know, especially African-American women, it's underreported, they don't come and talk about it enough. When a woman comes to a police officer and says, I've been hurt, and helping me form that yes out of my mouth, and that police officer then says, are you a United States citizen? That doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense to me. So, I have a different perspective of this because I see it every day, and I see what women go through who don't want to report, and I can imagine them actually having the courage to report and then being turned away. and then being turned away. Or detained, or deported. Not happening. So, that's why I voted "yes" today.
Is there anyone else? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. As Adam has said, he's learned from me, so have I learned from Adam. And that's how it works here. We are all trying to face tough issues every time we come here. We didn't know about this one tonight. I didn't know this one was here, so there was little time to prepare, to hear about it. But I would just like to say a couple things that I hope everyone will take into consideration. For me, this is not about the police. Whoever says it's about the police, didn't ask me. For me, it's not about the police, it's about government. How do we do government? And we have a beautiful democracy in which everybody's opinion should be heard, and everybody's opinion who's here tonight should be heard. And should be heard in a certain way. So, government works, I've thought hard about this issue. And I don't like using the "process" word, but sometimes it applies. There's a way that things work here. And the way we did it tonight, with finding out about this when I got here and stuff, isn't how it works. It didn't, and had it, with all due respect to Counselor Williams, he's right. The difference between a resolution and an ordinance is significant. A resolution is an urging, as he said. But there's also a sense of fair play. And I'm holding, in my hands, two legal cases in California that our city solicitor printed out for me tonight, once I saw this on the agenda. I asked him, "Do you have any counsel for us on this?" And he said he hasn't read these yet, but these are real. And we represent the city of Springfield, both sides. This is something on the other side. And maybe what you said about the CDBG money is right, but we have a process for having opinions given to us by the law department, et cetera. I also talked to the CFO, the CFO, TJ Plant, tonight. He said he's not prepared, he knows there's some implications. He was not prepared to give any recommendation on it. So, that's the other thing on us. We're not just representing people on one side of this issue tonight. And many of you gave up a lot of your night tonight to come here and fight for this. I applaud you. Should be passionate about things you care about. But we also have this other job, where we have to protect the city of Springfield. And will this come up again, maybe, at some point, where we have better information on both sides, as to what it means? That's really, basically, what I'm saying, is that we need to understand the side of what we heard tonight, and the redone resolution, and these other things, to see if they matter. Hopefully, that's the case, and there is no financial implication. But if there is, I'm chair of the Finance Committee. And we don't have trucks in next year's budget, because we can't afford vehicles. So, for me to vote or recommend, we can afford vehicles, we're going to buy some, but we can't afford them in our regular budget that's going to start July 1st. So, responsibility for us is responsibility to listen to everybody here, and I'd love to have a chance to meet with you. But it's also responsibility to protect the city. That doesn't mean closed-minded, that just means what our job is. So, I applaud the passion that was here tonight. And, you know, hopefully, we'll have a chance to listen, to talk about this some more. But that, I wouldn't view, I wouldn't view the no vote before, whatever, as any big deal or something. It just was, we were caught by surprise. And we didn't have any balancing information to see. And we're charged with doing both things. When you vote for somebody in September, November, whatever, you're asking them to use their best judgment, and their most fair, objective judgment. And we have to do that. So, hopefully, there'll be continued dialogue on this. But I just want to point that out. There was no intent to shut any opinion down tonight. It was just an intent to buy some time and think about this, and see what the best thing for our city is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think all of our colleagues that have spoken tonight have brought up good points. As Counselor Shay said, not only this is an emotional issue, but it is tense. We are a country of laws. I admire Counselor Gomez's passion on this issue, and where Counselor Williams is coming from. And Melvin Edwards asked, Counselor Edwards asked, "Where are we?" And the thought that came through my mind during the public speak is, we are in a country, and you touched on this, Counselor Allen, I think you're referring to it. We are in a country that not only values freedom of speech, but provides freedom of speech. You are in the council chambers of the city of Springfield in a government building, and you are able to freely express and chant and hold signs and give your point of view for your side of the issues. And I would like to say that I think we should all be happy to be Americans, and to recognize how lucky we are to be able to do that, to give our opinions without fear of violence. You can come to this chamber, you can come to any government chamber in Massachusetts, in the country, and give your opinion. However, opinions can be different. The fact that they're different doesn't mean that they're wrong. And I applaud everybody for their point of view. And as one of our counselors said, your point of view comes from your experience, you are entitled to it, and you are entitled to vote the way your conscience tells you. And I think that's what's going on here tonight.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Seeing none, as a co-sponsor of this resolution, I do feel compelled to speak on it. And so, I'm going to ask Counselor Hurst to take over the vote.
Is this dead? Still going? I know.
Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I said, as a co-sponsor of this ordinance, I felt compelled to at least give my point of view as to why I decided to co-sponsor this ordinance. And also to clarify what I think sounds like a misconception and a misinterpretation of what this resolution is all about. I'll begin by saying that I understand and apologize because we didn't give enough of a notice for this resolution. And counselors did not have an opportunity to look it over and kind of, and look at the full extent of the resolution prior to tonight's meeting. And I also wanted to clarify again and reiterate what Counselor Williams said, that this is a non-binding resolution. This is not an ordinance, this is not a law. This is simply an expression of what the city council believes, and what we believe in. And the purpose of this ordinance is two parts. Number one, to ensure that everyone in the city of Springfield, all of our residents, feel welcome and safe. Number two, is a financial reason, to make sure that we're not using, unnecessarily using, city resources to do the job of federal law enforcement officers. And when you think about where we are financially in the city of Springfield, the budget constraints that we're dealing with, particularly this year, Counselor Allen, you touched on it, the fact that we want to be able to finance more equipment for the police department. We can't afford to have our municipal law enforcement officers out doing the job of federal agents. We just can't afford to do that. We can't do that on our own dime. We, you know, if, if there are, we just don't have the manpower, we don't have the resources to allow our law enforcement officers to be out there and doing the job of immigration officers. And so, the first part of this resolution is to make sure that everyone feels welcome and feels safe. And the second one is just to state what we should not, you know, as counselors, we should, it is our job to ensure and to be financially, fiscally responsible, right? And so, we don't want to, we don't want to be using city resources for something that, you know, as I said, the federal agent should be doing. This is a non-binding resolution, it's not a law, it's not an ordinance. It's simply stating that we welcome everyone, that the city of Springfield welcomes everyone. And our statistics show that, our history shows that. That we're a minority-majority city, and we have people from all over the world, living in our city. And we just want to make sure that those people feel safe. And if they are victims of a crime, that they're not fearful of reaching out to a law enforcement officer. Counselor Williams couldn't have put it anything better. You know, if someone is a victim of a crime, they should have the right to report a crime, to report the crime, without fear of being deported, or fear of someone inquiring about their immigration status. And that's simply what we're asking here. You know, this isn't anything that's going to jeopardize funding. You know, it's stated clearly in the resolution. No provisions in this resolution shall be construed as prohibiting the police department from investigating and doing their job. It's just simply stating that Springfield welcomes everyone. That's all. And I'm a little bit disappointed that this is the way it turned out tonight. The urgency behind having this on the agenda today, on May 1st, is because today is May Day. And today is the day that there were demonstrations happening all across the country. And so, it was fitting to do it on this day. However, if my colleagues are not ready to vote on this tonight, I'd be happy to have further discussions about bringing it back to the floor at a future meeting. I think it's a good discussion that we need to have. We have to have this discussion. And I'm glad that we at least started having the discussion tonight. But again, you know, I read it through, I made some changes, and I thought thoroughly about whether or not I was going to co-sponsor this resolution. And the conclusion that I came to was that something that has to be done. That we have, especially in today's climate, we have to make it clear that Springfield is a welcoming city. And that's just the basis of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any other comments before the council?
Mr. President.
Counselor Ash.
I agree with Counselor Ramos that I think it is worthy of future conversations after tonight. And I have great admiration for the passion that everyone in this chamber speaks about on a variety of issues that we've dealt with collectively, most of us for the last seven, eight, or nine years. But it seems to me that when we do have conversations of this kind of substance, that we do it the right way. We give proper notification, we vet it. We have conversations with the proper people who are going to be affected by this. Tonight, we didn't do that. We put a piece of paper around in front of us with no warning, no discussions around what was going to be coming up. That's unfair. To me, that's inherently unfair, to ask that kind of a major decision like this that is playing out across, because we all want the same things. We want the same thing for our people, for our residents. We want them to feel safe. Well, let's do it the right way. Let's not do it the way that we did it tonight. And we could talk about how disappointed people are in everyone else in this, and I'm affected by that. I really am. But let's do it the right way. Let's have those conversations. Let's bring it back, not like we did it tonight.
Are there any other questions or comments for the council? Counselor Gomez.
Well, in closing, at the end of my last comments, I'm going to put a motion to bring this back with further education. So, probably, some of the counselors can reconsider their vote on this resolution. But I honestly just want to say that, you know, whoever had felt blindsided and stuff, you know, I apologize. But like Counselor President Ramos had stated, this was something that was in solidarity with SEIU, John's for Justice, Neighbor to Neighbor, and all the other organizations that took time to come out. And then after, everybody's going to the hay market, right? Hay market? For you guys don't understand what the hay market is, that's what May Day represents. The hay market crisis happened in Chicago for workers' rights to strike for having an eight-hour day. And what's the coincidence that the United States that we pledge allegiance to is the only country right now that doesn't stand in solidarity with their own people that died that day? With those workers that died that day, Irish workers that died that day? May Day wasn't just about South America, Mexico. It was about everybody in the world standing in solidarity. It wasn't about the protest. It was about standing in solidarity with workers' rights. But in the end, I want to make a motion. How do I do this, Mr. Clerk? Do I make a motion to committee?
Are you making a motion to send it to committee, Counselor Gomez?
I would appreciate that.
The amendment was defeated. The resolution is still on the floor.
Point of information, any resolution that's defeated can be brought back at the next appropriate meeting. Is that true?
That is correct, Mr. Clerk.
That's correct. You don't need, you can bring a resolution every week if you wanted to.
But the resolution is still on the floor. It hasn't been defeated.
Explain that to me. So, what's left on the floor?
The current resolution, as it stands before the body, is the first two paragraphs, it's in your packet, but it's the first two paragraphs of the document.
The first two paragraphs. Oh, it's just, oh, that's the, that's. Whereas the city of Springfield, was 61% of our residents, that's where it stops?
That's it?
Correct.
So, we're voting on that now?
Correct. Correct.
Do we have an option, Mr. Clerk, to send this to committee and have a discussion?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Counselor Gomez to send it to committee, seconded by Counselor Edwards. All in favor?
On the motion, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
On the motion. Now, I want to know what we're trying to accomplish with this document. I thought, in my estimation, we're talking about sanctuary city, making this a sanctuary city. I have not seen one clause that deals with sanctuary city in this document. So, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish with this, to make the police not enforce a sanctuary city, basically.
There's a motion.
All right, I'd like the law department to brief us at the next meeting before we have that meeting, Mr. President.
There's a motion on the table by Counselor Gomez. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Williams. Seconded by Counselor Edwards. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So.
Motion passes. Mr. Clerk, do we still have to vote on the resolution as it stands?
No. The resolution has been sent to committee.
So, there's nothing wrong with these two. It doesn't say nothing.
Right, item number 25, Mr. Clerk.
The last item on tonight's agenda is a request for an executive session from the law department for the purposes of discussing the litigation strategy related to the lawsuit entitled McDonald's USA LLC versus the Springfield City Council. The purpose of this executive session is informational only. There will be no votes or other official actions taken by the body.
Motion made by Counselor Edwards, seconded by Counselor Gomez. Counsel Fenton.
Mr. Clerk, with the intention that we do not come out of executive session, correct?
Motion, motion so made.
Motion made by Counsel Edwards, seconded by Counsel Gomez. All of those in favor? Oh, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On going into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategies and not returning, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen.
Executive session.
No, no, the question is, there is a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategies related to McDonald's USA versus the city of Springfield and not returning.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook. Yes, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez. Yes, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams. Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twix, absent Counsel Shay. Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, we will now go into executive session. We'll take a brief recess to allow the cameras to shut off and allow us to clear the room. And we'll reconvene in just a few minutes. Thank you.